I think we have everybody now, so we're ready.
Okay, wonderful. I will call the Thursday, October 8th, 2020 meeting of the Scranton School Board to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
Roll call, please. This is Or.
Ms. Cruz.
Present.
Mrs. Dempsey.
Present.
Ms. Fox.
Present.
Ms. Hume.
Present.
Mr. Malloy.
Present.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mrs. Welby.
Present.
Mrs. Yanni.
Present.
Ms. Gil Martin.
Present.
Nine present.
Does anyone have anything they would like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Did I hear?
I think we're going to approve the agenda. Is that?
Yes, I just asked if anyone had anything they would like to pull from the consent agenda before we do that.
Okay.
And there are also two motions that we are just going to reorder this evening. We will be moving E4 and E5 under the Budget and Finance section. So Budget and Finance will proceed 13.01 B4. And then E4 and E5 from the Operations Committee. The motion to approve change order for datum on summer abatement project. And the motion to award Waco for Isaac Trip Elementary Access Road. We will then proceed to B5, the motion to approve capital improvement bill list, which includes those two items, payments for those two items. So is everyone clear on that? Ginny, are you okay?
I think so. When we get there, then we'll.
I have it noted here. I'm going to put a star next to it, and hopefully I will remember to read this properly. So may I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting?
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Or, communications to the board.
Yes, executive sessions were held on June 10th, June 29th, July 27th, August 3rd, August 27th, August 31st, September 14th, September 29th of 2020, and this evening to discuss real estate litigation, personnel, and negotiations.
Thank you. Solicitor's report, Mr. Audi.
I apologize, I was on mute. Good evening, President Gil Martin and School Board. What we will be doing tonight, as most of you will recall, we had technical difficulties at our last meeting, and the entire meeting was not able to be streamed on YouTube as advertised. So we went through a litigation about the Sunshine Act, and a preliminary injunction was granted, which now puts us in the position of having to revote the motions that were put on the board at that last meeting. So you will see those here today under a consent agenda. That's what that represents. With that, we will proceed, as usual, with additional new motions, and then the revote on the motions from the last board meeting. That's all I have.
Mr. Audi, can you also explain why it was that we moved the meeting from Monday evening to this evening?
Yes, yes. I would be happy to move. What happens is, in the beginning of a school year, the board, school boards typically put out an announcement of all of the dates that will, a board meeting will take place, so that the notice is put out. And in this particular case, since there was no change from the original date, the notice listed this board meeting as taking place in a brick and mortar location, and we felt that it was necessary to put out and advertise that this would be held through the Zoom meeting that we have on a larger platform, I might add, of 1,000 attendees. So that's why we did that.
Thank you. So that is a significant increase in capacity from the September 4th meeting.
Yes, the previous meeting allowed 100 people. And I know, I will say this, that Ms. Or did everything in her power to get more than 100 in, because when she realized there was streaming, she was moving people into the panelist section, which does not count toward the 100, anybody she recognized and she knew would not bomb the meeting. She put in there, and then would fill up the remainder with those who were trying to get in, or those who had signed up to speak, and did an admirable job, I must say, with the valiant effort on her part. But hopefully, this will take care of that issue in the future.
Thank you. And I do see that we are live on YouTube now, but it is our intention that by increasing the capacity in Zoom, we will certainly make every effort to stream live on YouTube, but we will not advertise as such should we run into a technical difficulty at any time in the future.
That's exactly correct, because now we have, we believe we have a capacity of 1,000, and certainly think that would be sufficient to accommodate those who wanted to attend, listen, and/or speak.
And I see Mr. Doherty nodding along here. I don't want to put you on the spot, Paul, but I'm going to anyway. Do we, did we ever get to the bottom of the technical issues, or was it just truly a strange glitch?
It was, it was a Zoom issue. We actually had issues with Zoom throughout that day. Even within the school day, we were having issues with Zoom that day. And we just, for some reason, it was not a YouTube issue, it was a Zoom issue. And it was just what we were not able to stream to YouTube or to Facebook at that point. But like Mr. Audi said, we did pay for an upgrade, to upgrade our Zoom. Now we have 1,000 capacity in our attendees, which is quite large, because I think the largest we ever had on YouTube was about 600. So our capacity of Zoom at 1,000 should be, you know, should be more than, and sufficient, but we will continue to stream on YouTube, and of course, we continue to record and make the recordings available for anybody that wants to view them.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Audi, one more question that came up when Mrs. Or and I were speaking. How, and perhaps this is something to research and come back to us, but how do we preserve the record from September 14th? Because I am assuming that there will not be official minutes of that meeting, since the action was, I don't know, nullified.
Well, well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that.
I think that we should have, we should have a notation of the minutes, because it did take place, it's just that the motions that were voted upon were deemed invalid because of the Sunshine Law. And I would keep a copy of the recorded, the recorded meeting also for posterity, should anyone want to see it. But I know that was published the next morning at 7:00 in the morning. But I would make note, perhaps, at the bottom of the minutes, or at the top of the minutes, that the motions were deemed to be in violation of Sunshine, and therefore not effectuated. And you may even make a notation to reference this board meeting for the revote.
Is, do we have to take any official action on that, or is it simply something that Ginny can note?
I think Ginny can do that, but we could, as we always do, we could approve that at the next board meeting.
Okay, okay. Very good. Thank you. Anyone have any questions from Mr. Audi? I know he usually just shares out, but I'm sure would be happy to address anything. Okay, Superintendent's report, Mrs. McTiernan.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Director Gil Martin. During my report tonight, I'm going to try to clarify some information, some misinformation that has been going out for our school community. So this is kind of going to be a question and answer. I am going to at some point ask some individuals to come on to help me answer some of these questions. The first question that I'm getting a lot of, that I'd like to address, is when are you in virtual education until? And I would like to clarify, the school board voted to continue virtual learning until November 12th, which is the end of the first quarter. Moving forward, discussions will take place on October 19th during our Education Committee meeting, also during October 26th during our work session. And then the plan is, at this point, for the board vote to happen on November 2nd, as far as what is going to happen for our second quarter for education for our students. So hopefully that will help give a timeline for our school community. The next thing I'm going to answer is, I'm getting a lot of emails, why are we telling teachers they can only teach for seven to 10 minutes in live lessons? This is not a directive that central administration has sent out. In fact, we are encouraging teachers to teach live lessons as much as possible. Administration cannot dictate how long a lesson would take a teacher. That's a teacher's job, and depends on, depends on the student need. The board approved in our academic addendum that teachers must provide live or recorded instruction at least three times a week per course. All live teaching sessions must be recorded, as students may only be able to watch at a later time in that day. So hopefully that clarifies, we did not put any time limit on, and never would put that on. Teachers have the ability to go live as much as they want, but they must do it at a minimum of three times per week. And what I'm going to ask parents is, if this is not happening in an individual classroom, please reach out to that building principal, so that they can investigate that for, and look into that situation for you. So hopefully that clarifies the, but I know that I did get a couple seven to 10-minute questions, and I'm not really sure where that came from. But hopefully we can clear that up, and the building principals can clear up that situation, if it is happening in the building. The next question I want to address is, can teachers use other resources besides Accelerated at the elementary level? And I did answer this in previous, I believe, in the work session, but my answer is absolutely. The AE is the, Accelerated is the Curriculum Schoop and Sequence, which means we tell, the program tells teachers when to teach what. But teachers absolutely can use other supplemental resources that best meet their students' needs. I'm getting a lot of questions about Google Classroom and Google Meet, and absolutely, teachers can use those, along with other supplemental resources that they have, that they would use if we were in a traditional brick and mortar setting. So the concept that we can only use Accelerated is not a fact, and hopefully I cleared that up today. Many parents are asking for Google Classroom. I just want to make it clear that during the spring, we got the reverse emails, that parents were not happy with Google Classroom, because it was not rigorous enough. So again, we're trying to find that happy medium and balance. And as I stated before, we're trying to implement and troubleshoot a brand-new program and platform into the district at the same time. I have to say that I met with a teacher union group that was assigned by the union. I met with them two weeks ago, and then I met with them again yesterday. And I have to say that the meeting went, was very positive yesterday. They felt that we were moving in the right direction. I want to thank them for their input, and I think we're moving, like I said, in the right direction. I would like our community to realize that if and when we do go back to hybrid, teachers are going to need a platform that they use when students are not in front of them. So in a hybrid setting, individual students, the way we have it set up, is that students would be in class two days a week and out at home three days a week. So while students are at home, they are going to need something. So we will continue with Accelerated. We will continue making improvements. We have additional professional development that we're working on for the teachers. We sent out a teacher survey, we got feedback, and we're setting up those professional development days as we speak. And we continue to, parents continue to give us your feedback, and as you give us our feedback, we try to make the appropriate changes. And I want to say thank you. The next thing I would like to address is the Accelerated Ed workbooks. There's a lot of rumors that need to be addressed, because there's misinformation that is being sent out. And I, and obviously, I'm going to hopefully answer some of those questions right now. So the first thing I want to say is, in a normal situation, a program such as Accelerated, or a textbook, or any other resource that we would purchase at the district level, we would pilot that for at least a year before making a decision. Well, obviously, given the situation of the pandemic, we had to move a lot quicker than we would have liked. We didn't have the luxury of piloting anything. So tonight, I'm going to ask Mrs. Grebek, Director of Elementary Education, to join me. I want to thank her for all of her work, and constantly working on this to improve the situation. But first, I want to, I want to address, how was the Accelerated Ed education platform chosen? And again, I know we've addressed this already, but this was a sealed bid process. That, that's how the actual platform was chosen. Did the Accelerated Ed package we purchased include hardcover workbooks? My understanding is, we purchased the COVID price, and with the COVID price, we were not awarded hardcover workbooks. We paid a price that was lower in the amount, it was called the COVID pricing. So we did not purchase those hardcover workbooks. And so because of that, and because of our situation, as everybody knows with the Chromebooks, we're still waiting for all of the Chromebooks to come in, so that we can give every student a Chromebook. And we are still waiting on that. I'm going to ask Mrs. Grebek some questions right now, and she's going to answer them as to how we got where we are. So, Mrs. Grebek, good evening, and thank you for being here. Can you tell me why were the Accelerated Ed workbooks purchased? And why, why did we feel the need that we needed them?
Absolutely. Good evening, directors and community, and thank you Superintendent McTiernan for allowing me this opportunity to not only inform, but share some facts. So please let me be very clear. During the summer, the trainers provided an in-service on Accelerated Education. Those attending this training were the following people. All of the elementary principals, our ESL Coordinator, Ms. Cosgrove, Ms. Maloney from our tech department, Ms. Abdella from our title department, the trainers, and myself. During this training, we were learning about how students can submit work electronically, which would be new for very young learners. Also during this time, the district had a shortage of Chromebooks. So during this training, many elementary principals indicated that they would be requesting hard copies of the workbooks, especially for our core subjects, which is reading and math. Having a hard copy for young students to actually work in, just like in a brick and mortar classroom, is best practice. We also needed a way students could submit their work, should they not have a Chromebook, or submitting electronically be a challenge. As stated in the academic addendum, and I quote, "In a fully virtual model, each student will be provided beneficial learning opportunities, whereby teachers will assign standard-based tasks and assess student learning." The academic addendum also states, "Student work will be graded using regular grading practices." Without Chromebooks, how would students submit their work? How would teachers grade assignments if we didn't have these workbooks? Also, with limited internet, a workbook would allow students to continue working on assignments. Parents have responded on how they're happy that they are able to take pictures of students' work and submit it to their teachers. So this decision was made based on the people that attended that meeting, and the principals indicating that they felt as though a workbook, or a hard copy manual for students to write in, would be most appropriate. All I asked the principals to do was to please be consistent. So for equity across the district, if we were ordering workbooks in reading and math, that all schools do this, so that all students will be provided the same materials to work from at home.
Thank you. Can you tell me how they were paid for? How, so, so we didn't order the workbooks, but what, what did we do after that? So we didn't order the workbooks from the company, so tell me what the next step was.
So what happened was, during the training, the facilitators explained that they were able to, they have the copyright approval to make copies at a reduced cost, and the principals purchased those through their title budgets or their school book budgets.
Great. And could you tell me if we were to buy a workbook from the company, how much would that cost?
So I asked the company, I emailed them, and they quoted me a price of $17.25 for each workbook. And again, the vendor was able to make these copies ranging anywhere from three to approximately $10 a book. They're not as fancy as the ones that would have come probably from the company, but they definitely served the purpose, and were significantly less than what the company would have charged.
So you said $17.25. Could you tell me how much we paid per book to have them copied by the IU-19?
Yeah, the books ranged in price depending on the subject and the grade. They ranged between three and around $10 and $11 per workbook.
Okay, so the cost per workbook from the company is $7.25.
No, from the company, it's $17.
$17.25, I apologize. $17.25. And a copy per book to have it at the IU-19 was anywhere between $3 and $10.
Between three, yes, that's correct.
Sounds like you made a fiscally sound decision. I appreciate that. My next question is, you've already answered this, but can you restate why we did not copy the books ourselves?
We do not have the copyright rights to these books. The vendor is the, they're the trainers, they're the ones that facilitate the professional development, and they have the copyright license and approval from the company to make those copies. We do not. The district does not have copyright approval to do that.
And, and I'm going to restate this again, and I know I have Ms. Kelly's point here, but the reason to purchase these books was a decision that was made on the part of you working with the principals. Is that correct?
It was during the training with the principals, and the principals, after hearing how students would have to submit electronically, having it be a brand-new platform, the principals started to express interest in wanting to request hardcover workbooks. And during that training, many principals joined in, in agreeing with that, and I asked them to please be consistent. If a few schools wanted to order it, we needed, for equity purposes, to be sure all of the schools were ordering the same workbook, so all students were provided the hardcover workbooks to work on at home.
Thank you. And recently, I know that some students were receiving Accelerated Ed workbooks at their home. These were hardcover workbooks that were coming to, to our homes. And I would like to share something with our community, because again, this is a rumor that's out there, and I'm not really into rumors. So I'm going to try to share a document which I received, if I can bring it up. I will try. Give me one second, please. I need to go into my email. I will be right with you. And again, I apologize, this is taking so long, but I think it's important that our community has the facts, and not, and not made up information. So if everybody could see this, this was an email that I received. This, and I'm certainly not going to read, everybody's very capable of reading. But you will see from this email that workbooks were actually accidentally sent to our homes. The company is asking, there was a setting that was not checked off on their end to prevent the order. This means that there's over $100,000 worth of workbooks that were delivered to some of our student homes. So we will be sending a one-call to our families, the principals were, to try to collect these workbooks, which we did not pay for, and were accidentally sent to our student homes, some of them, 2,000 workbooks. That's certainly not all of our students, so that will be coming out. But I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that that is, that's actually the truth. So hopefully that will clear up that situation.
Missy, do we have any, the company has no recourse against us, should someone have written a book, or not make arrangements to return it? I mean, if there are some that are just lost, the company understands that they will absorb that loss, not us.
Well, I'm certainly not a lawyer, but I could tell you, if we didn't order them, I will direct that question to my solicitor to answer that question.
Right, I cannot see any liability on our part. We'll do our, we'll do our best to have them sent back. But if, if somehow it doesn't happen, we will not be responsible for paying for them.
And I, I also think it's important that if a parent realizes their child wrote in this book, they don't need to panic.
Absolutely. That's not, that's not the parent's fault, it's not the child's fault, it's not the district's fault. So we will do our best to retrieve the tech, the information, the workbooks that we can. And what we can't, there's nothing we can do about it.
Thank you.
The, the last thing I want to do, and I think this is important, because this came up, but I have asked Mrs. Kelly Coyne, who's not only one of our principals, but she's also a parent. And she had some information that she shared, and I thought it would be good for our community if she shared it with them, because as many emails I'm getting about the workbooks that, I'm also getting thanking emails, from parents stating, thanking me for that, they do have them. So Kelly, if you don't mind, Mrs. Coyne, if you don't mind joining, and just giving some brief remarks about your feelings on how the workbooks are working in your school, and also as a parent.
Absolutely. Thank you, Board of Directors, for allowing me to speak this evening, Superintendent McTiernan, and the community. Upon initial discussion with regard to Accelerated Education, as Mrs. Grebek has already referenced, it was brought to our attention that we had the opportunity to implement the use of the workbooks. That was something that I immediately supported, particularly because our students in kindergarten, first, and second grade truly benefit from having a pencil in their hands. Not only that, it's very difficult to do math problems, math solutions, typing virtually. And although you can edit virtually, it is somewhat of a foreign experience for anyone who hasn't already had that opportunity to do such. So as a result, we definitely supported ordering the workbooks. As a building principal, I'm thrilled that we have them. I know that we have the opportunity for those students who do not have access to a Chromebook or internet to be experiencing the same content that everyone else is. For those students who don't have access to technology, our teachers are reaching out, whether it be through telephone, or classroom dojo, or any other kind of communication application that parents have access to on their telephones, to inform them of the content that is being used in the lessons, and then to let them know what to complete. And then they are distributing these materials, or receiving completed work, whether it be dropping it off at the school, or then sending it electronically, perhaps through Remind, Dojo, or any other kind of communication tool, specifically including teachers' emails. So we have a broad exposure for all of our students to the same content in the same way, and consistency is key. As a parent, I have a first grader and a fourth grader in the district. I value the workbooks, because I personally have chosen to submit their work by taking pictures of the workbooks and submitting through Google Classroom. Not that I'm not able to submit through Accelerated Education, it's just easier for me to work with my children in that manner. And it also provides us the opportunity, as parents and guardians, to submit in a way that is easiest and most convenient for us. So I truly support the workbooks. I'm thrilled that we have them, and it provides consistency and equitable exposure to the content for all students.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate you taking your time to join us tonight, Mrs. Coyne.
You're welcome.
Miss Kelly.
So hopefully that clears up some of the misinformation that has been out there regarding Accelerated Ed and Accelerated Ed workbooks, and I appreciate your time on that. I just have a few more items, and I'm sorry. Mr. Doherty, can you provide just a brief update to the community on where we are with our Chromebook order, please?
Sure, absolutely. Thanks again for calling on me. Mr. Del Preet and myself have a standing call each Tuesday morning with CDW in Lenovo. As you know, we've been closely monitoring this for months. We ordered our 8300 Chromebooks back on June 18th, and at that point, we were given a delivery date of mid-August. At that point, the federal government got involved, right around the 1st of August, end of July. And the Department of Commerce placed 12 companies on an entities list, which then the companies were no longer able to provide parts for Chromebooks to CDW, Lenovo, to Dell, to pretty much every major manufacturer of educational Chromebooks. Currently nationwide, there's a 5 million. Currently nationwide, there's a five-million-unit shortfall of back order. We are fortunate that we kind of did order when we did, because although we do not have them, we are expecting them, fingers crossed, at some point this month. I do, again, I do meet with Lenovo every Tuesday, so we're hoping to get a firm delivery date on our next Tuesday. That's, that's, you know, what I'm hopeful for, but at this point, there's no reason to believe that we're not going to get them this month. But if that changes, of course, I will update the board and the community, but at this point, we're kind of status quo with that. But Lenovo is back up and running at a hundred percent capacity. They did get another company making the chips that, you know, they are, so they are assembling and shipping devices now. Now it's just a matter of where we are in the process of when we ordered in the queue of delivery. But I will continue to update the board and the community on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. My next item is great news. I'm, I'm so excited because I didn't think I was going to be able to go, but it's regarding the Bell Game. And the Bell Game, as everybody knows, is Saturday at two o'clock. Each school is selling nine hundred tickets. Once they run out, then there's no more tickets for each school. Ticket sales at both high schools will be tomorrow, the last day is Friday, twelve to three. There will be no tickets being sold at the game, so it's all pre-sale. And again, S.H.S. will sell their tickets at the front entrance, and West Grant High School will sell tickets on the thirteenth street side of the school. The gates will open at one o'clock. Masks and social distancing will be required, no re-entry if you, if will be allowed, no concessions will be available, and I'd like to wish both teams good luck, and I'm really excited that I'm going to be there. And last but not least, Mr. Laffey, would you please provide a food service update at this point for the board and our community? Thank you.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to give a quick update on the food service program that we've been operating since March with the school closure. We're excited to announce that to date, actually through this week, since the closure of schools on March thirteenth, we've served over one hundred and eighty-four thousand meals to our students and our community. That would consist of our breakfast and lunch that's been available. We will continue to make these meals available every Monday and Wednesday from ten a.m. to one p.m. We're excited to, to learn recently that we are able to actually include meals for the weekend as well. So students will be able to receive seven meals, seven meals each week. The sites that we will continue to serve at are Scranton High School, West Grant High School, Isaac Trip Elementary, John Whittier, Kennedy, and Armstrong. Another part of some good news is we recently received notice that we've been awarded a fresh fruit and vegetable program as well for each of our elementary schools. So we will be distributing fresh fruit and vegetables to the students in addition to their daily breakfast and lunch each week. And with that is an educational component where a fact sheet will accompany the, the vegetable or the fruit of, of the day or the week. So we thought that was good news, and we'd like to share it with the board and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laffey, and thank you for all of your work on that. I appreciate it.
Well, I'd like to thank our food service staff, both from Aramark and the district, for the preparation, delivery, and service of these meals. They've really come through.
Yes, they have. Director Gil Martin, that is all I have at this time.
Thank you. Thank you for such a comprehensive overview of all of the matters you're, you're all working through right now. And, and again, thank you to Pat for his unbelievable hard work and to Aramark for your support of the programs, the meal programs, rather. So thank you, everybody, for your support of our students. And certainly, I agree, Missy, I am delighted that the governor's guidelines were loosened. I know everyone will still remain safe and far apart from one another, but I am absolutely not going to take one of those precious tickets, but I will be cheering everybody on from the other end of Capos Avenue, which is where I'll be that day. So thank you very much. With that, Director Dempsey, PSBA report.
Yes, two major dates, really. October eighth is the Fall Virtual Advocacy Day. There's no cost to register. You can register online, so if any of our, the board is interested, let me know. There's also the PSA, P.A.S.A., PSBA School Leadership Conference, October fourteenth and fifteenth. Again, the entire board is welcome to attend. You do have to register. You can register a team of ten at one time. So again, if anyone is interested, let me know. Some advocacy work on behalf of PSBA, one big item is the House Bill two-six-nine-six was actually pulled from consideration last week. For those of you that are not familiar, that House bill was actually regarding vouchers to an extent, it was called the Back on Track ESAs, and they would be used by families for students regarding educated, education-related needs, like tutoring, online classes, curriculum, tuition, counseling, and it essentially would work like a five-twenty-nine. So that was pulled from consideration, which is actually a win for us, because those vouchers could have been used to take students out of the Scranton School District. Another piece of legislation, the PSBA is working with a senator from Cambria County. They're trying to push for action on a bill that would provide mandated relief for the schools. So the bill, it's actually Senate Bill twelve-eighty-six. It would establish a program that would allow public schools to apply for, apply to the PDE for a waiver of many of the state-imposed mandates, if the school can show that its instructional program will improve, or the school will operate in a more effective, efficient, or economical manner. So that's a pretty big deal, and, and one of the last ones, it's a big one, there's, PSBA is asking all of their board and really everyone to kind of push for public action regarding temporary grant of immunity from COVID-19 lawsuits. You know, as we talk about going back into an in-person setting at whatever capacity we decide, we, schools need to know that, you know, we have some immunity, that if there should be some type of COVID-19 outbreak in school buildings or in buses, you know, we needed hands protections during this time from frivolous and opportunistic lawsuits alleging exposure. So that's another big piece, another action item from PSBA. So that's pretty much it for this month.
Michelle, thank you, and thank you for sharing that letter. I think if there is no objection from our colleagues, we should certainly take that action and get that letter submitted.
Yes, and I, I do have the letter, and I can work on sending that over to Director Gil Martin, so that we can get the electronic signatures. Good to go.
Very good. Thank you. And I also would be interested in the conference. I started to register and got interrupted, so I didn't realize we could do that as a group, so maybe we can talk about that tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. We will now entertain public comment. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Union officials, of course, will have four minutes. I want to thank everyone for maintaining a strong sense of decorum at our last meeting, and I would, of course, ask for the same this evening. So with that, Mrs., oh, and Mrs. Orr, you have been, I, I know that ordinarily, we would have people sign up with their first and last name, which if you have not renamed yourself, please do so now if you wish to speak, but also with an address, that would be part of the sign-in sheet. And I certainly don't want to put anyone on the spot to state their address live on YouTube, but if you can collect that information, and if that has not yet been shared with Mrs. Orr and an individual speaker is comfortable stating that, please do so, and that will save her one more email.
Thank you. Okay. Now, before I begin, I just want, there's a couple people that I wasn't, I weren't, I'm not able to find them on the speakers list, and I did email every single one of them, and I did get some responses back, but we'll see how we get, how we go. Jackie Munley?
I'm here.
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jackie Munley, and I have been a paraprofessional in the Scranton School District for twenty years. I can't begin to tell you how disappointed I am with the events that have occurred in the Scranton School District as far as furloughing all of the paraprofessionals and taking away our benefits. My teacher, Mrs. Blaney, and I are working every day with our students online, and we were trying to put together a system to do their progress monitoring. There is, regardless of what you are being told, plenty of work for us to do. You never gave it a second thought to furlough us, never thought to have the teachers or ourselves put in any input to figure out a plan. Just furlough them and take away our benefits to save money? How sad. We are part of this school district and a very important part of the special ed department. With unemployment, I would be making one hundred and eighty dollars a week. That would be seven hundred and twenty dollars a month. Health insurance for my husband and myself with Cobra would be two thousand dollars a month. How are we supposed to make that work? Insurance in general is extremely expensive. There are currently pregnant paraprofessionals, paraprofessionals fighting cancer, paraprofessionals supporting their families by providing health insurance. By the way, Mr. Audi, it is one hundred percent not illegal to offer insurance to employees while being furloughed. How dare you make this mistake during a meeting in which the board is voting to furlough us? Maybe next time, Google the question before you supply the answer. I did. All our surrounding districts gave health insurance to their furloughed employees. Do I need to remind anyone that we are in the middle of a pandemic? Imagine that this is your world, being turned upside down. We are employees of this district. We are human beings. We matter. Show us a little decency. You need to continue our health insurance. Please give us some options. I am sure we would all be willing to pay the amount you are currently taking out of our paychecks. This is temporary, or so you tell us. Why would you do this? Tonight, when you vote, stare into the camera and picture all of the families you are affecting. Shame on all of you. If you don't, at the very least, let us keep our benefits. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Please, please do the right thing.
Next, we have Roberta Jaddick.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. No one is useless in the world who lightens the burdens of another. Charles Dickens wrote this in the eighteen hundreds. School started, and there was no work for these people. John Audi made that statement when asked by Judge Munley why the board didn't delay the vote, given the technical issues. These people, we are not these people, we are paraprofessionals. I am an educated woman who assists a wonderful teacher in bringing order and routine into a chaotic world. I offer kindness and solace to a child who has little of it in his or her life. I help enlighten a mind that isn't easily opened. It may be easy to imagine how I do this in a classroom setting, but you need to open your minds and picture how it can work in a remote setting. Just this week alone, I prepared visual schedules, read a story online to our kids, sent birthday greetings to a nine-year-old, scheduled progress monitoring, checked attendance, graded homework, and contacted parents about missing work. This may not sound like a lot, but you tried tracking down a parent. It can take hours. There were copies to be made and packets to be assembled. And speaking of packet, of copies, are you prepared to pay a teacher twenty-nine fifty an hour for the time they will need to put in above the regular workday so that he or she can make copies? And there are the other teachers in the building that I helped. See, we're all in the same boat. They are navigating unfamiliar wa, waters. None of them took a course in college named e-Schooling for Dummies. They are learning as they go. They are more familiar with the intricacies of video editing than they ever imagined. So I offer my assistance wherever needed. Anything I can do to make their job easier is a way to help students that I may never know, and I am not alone. My paraprofessional coworkers are available for anyone that needs us, not just the teacher to whom we are assigned. I am a home, homeowner, a taxpayer in the city of Scranton. And although I am in, an employee of the SSD, the administrators are my employees. I and every taxpayer pay your salary, your benefits, and we are not satisfied with your job performance. We donate better for the people who we pay handsomely. No one is useless in the world who lightens the burdens of another. That describes me and my coworkers. We are not those people. We have work to do. Let us do what we love to do. The children of the district deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Next, we have Barbara Cook. Barbara Cook? Ms. Cook, you're muted.
Now, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Sean, I wrote to you before to thank you for your help. Unfortunately, I could not talk at that time, as I, like so many hard-working, caring individuals, also have personal issues needing to be attended to on top of the stress and hardship being created with job loss, and not to mention a global pandemic. Financial hardship and further personal divide between groups of people with the supposed common goal created by this decision. It goes without saying that the vote to furlough compassionate, hard-working individuals was felt to be cruel and heartless. As a paraprofessional or teacher, you get to be able to read people's faces and learn a lot from body language and expression. Working with kids every day that need assistance to be able to succeed, tears, frustration, pain, and joy are evident every day without words, and it is disheartening to see a clear void of emotion on the board with the decision, knowing again the real impact on the faces we see daily. The editorial written by Hugh in the Scranton Times about voting was both timely and ironic. It may be, have been written with a wine buzz, but definitely spoke about the listening and the attention the Scranton School.
We will not address our board members in that manner, please.
Excuse me? I did not hear you.
You cannot address our board members personally in that way. That is a personal attack. Please move on to the comments.
The Scranton School District by people who lived their entire lives in this area and want to give back to their community in need. A callous statement was made by, won't name them, "Well, we can just vote again," is indicative of the predetermined decision and unwillingness to hear what we have to say, not to just listen to the words, but the message. If the board would again listen to this question, please respond upon my conclusion. It is well-known and very public, so well, here it goes. Why are there so many hall monitors, principals, and their staff still working? How many raises have been given to administrative position? And how many new administrative positions added within the past year, two years, or three years? Why were postings put up for these new positions then taken down in a day? Is this a CYA posting? To say it was up and to avoid a lawsuit? But no one needs to apply because we know who is getting the six-figure salary already. Why is it that the daily worker whose income is five times, six times, who is in a direct line for every illness, news slash COVID-19, is not the illness to infect our kids? Why do we, who have the greatest impact on the kids' lives, with the exception of the course of teachers who spend the most time in the district with the kids who need the help and their parents asking for help? Why do we need to be made to suffer along?
Ms. Cook, your time is up.
I'm almost finished. With the exception of the teachers, why do we need to make, to suffer along with the kiddos who need us most? A question was related to this pandemic. Why are our schools not?
You have to wrap up your comments if you'd like to submit your questions.
What I will do is I will memorialize this on Facebook and send it to the editor of the Times. Thank you very much.
Appreciate if you submitted your questions to Mrs. Orr, and we'll do our best to answer.
I will post it in the paper. Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Cook.
Next, we have Holly Mead.
Hi. I would like to first thank the ELL Department.
I would like to first thank the ELL Department for creating such a fabulous website. Thank you for beginning to help so many of our ELL students. Recently, I switched positions after twelve years of being a special education teacher to becoming a seventh-grade English teacher. I'd like to thank Missy for bringing up the ELA textbooks in the last work session. Our current ELA textbooks were published in two thousand and one, and as she stated, it went through the rigorous process of being approved. In November of two thousand and eighteen, I asked about the textbooks. We were promised in two thousand and eighteen and in two thousand and nineteen, but each year in December, our one hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item has been cut. Tonight, you will eagerly approve Mr. Doherty's suggestion for a new track at Memorial Stadium. How many SSD students use that track in Scranton? I can tell you the three populations of your three middle schools would all use the textbooks, approximately two thousand two hundred kids. It's not that I don't think our students deserve a new track, because I know they do. But don't you think they deserve an interactive new curriculum as well? The microscope is on Scranton to improve test scores, but you need to provide us with the tools to achieve the goals you have set in the recovery plan. The reason I left special, special education was not because of the students or paperwork. I left because rarely did we receive effective directive directives from our special education director. The lack of direction and inability of the director to effectively solve complex special education issues is why I decided to leave. A perfect example of this is the non-utilization of our paraprofessionals during this critical time. Our paras are a vital piece to the special education program in each school being successful. Think of our paras as life jackets on a sailboat. They are that last line of defense before a student actually drowns, or in our case, fails. As, are they needed? Yes. Do they provide comfort and protection? Yes. Do you need to wear one? Yes. Would you ever let your child on a sailboat without a life jacket? No. Would you ever let your child in a special education environment virtually without a para? No. Would you ever run a special education department without paraprofessionals? The answer clearly is no. The advice and guidance the board is seeking from the special education director and our solicitor needs to be questioned. You owe it to the parents of our students to explain to them why you're just throwing their life jackets out of the boat. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Next, we have Vivian Williams.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you.
Ginny, don't start the timer. Vivian, before you begin, I just want to congratulate you. Mrs. Williams was honored by the Times leader as one of twelve distinctive women in our community. So congratulations and thank you for all your good work.
Thank you, Director Gilmar, and I appreciate that. Tonight, I was going to share with you the specific difficulties our family is having working through the virtual education process. So over the last week, I've begun, begun to feel that it doesn't matter much. While I appreciate Mrs. Coin's administrator slash parent input, I may suggest that you ask ones that just serve as the role of parent as to how virtual ed is going. I have the deepest respect for administration, many who take the time to reply to my emails and even call me. Director Cruz, I appreciate the time you took to come to visit my family and the genuine care you have for our families. I truly respect each and every one of you on this school board. I will always support our teachers fiercely and passionately, though what comes before any role I may take on is the role to my three children and being their mother and advocate. Both my children, both my daughters, are expected to learn virtually without knowing how to retain a lesson being taught. I sit with them, showing them how to take notes, how to pull out what's most important for quizzes and tests that many are being tested above grade level. My sixth grader has taken two hours to complete a science lesson with my assistants, sixties and seventies on her English and reading tests through Apex, often leaving her feeling dumb. Our Western Intermediate family has been amazing and is working hard to engage a grade that ended elementary school virtually, only to start it the same way, now navigating a whole new world. Mrs. Holmes, thank you for your encouraging message to our students. Do not let that quiz bring you down. I know several of you really struggled and did not feel good about it. Shake it off. You are doing a great job in the virtual world. We have lots of good things to come. My fifth grader, who loved school prior to COVID, is now struggling in so many ways that we have sought counseling for her. If, if A is to be used supplemental, there's no universal way to print lessons for students like mine, who is not a virtual learner. I will make it clear that all my children's teachers and building administrators have gone above and beyond during this time, though I will continue to supplement my child by printing them at my own cost. As there are also no workbooks for AE Science or Social Studies, along with no workbooks for support for my daughter who's in sixth grade. My kids all need support to get them through this time. I cannot provide that attention and support they each deserve. I'm exhausted and overwhelmed and daily feel as if I am failing my children. I know I am not the norm. I am that parent that has reached out to all of my children to ask what extra resources they need, utilizes every support the district has, ensures that all three of my children are on their lives, often giving up my laptop for that live to then work into the night myself. I am not well-versed in the board's regular responsibilities, but we are in the middle of a pandemic where the district is asking, expecting parents to do more. So I am asking, as a board, you do more by insisting the SFT does what's best for our students without a minimum, a hybrid re-entry come November. As I know, I will be looking at sending my kids somewhere, if, even if I need to leave the SSD, which will be heartbreaking as my family's hearts bleed blue. Think, think of our most vulnerable students who are most likely suffering quietly, not getting a quality education due to barriers such as ELL, special ed, and K through three. If my son's TSS is not present, who I had a fight to keep, he is not being educated that day because I cannot do it all. He is the one suffering, being my youngest. Two last questions to leave you are still with. Did the district demo the platforms before purchase? We talked about how we did talk, you guys did answer questions, but were they actually demoed to see how they worked? Along with consulting districts that had used that platform to get firsthand experience on how they work, along with the cost, as many of us are, um, worried about our fiscal, our financial obligations.
Vivian, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, and thank you, Director Gilmar.
Absolutely, thank you.
Next, we have Linda Jenkins. Linda? There's a Jenkins that is muted. Is that you, Linda?
Okay, can, can you hear me?
Yeah, you have a lot of background noise going on.
Sorry.
This is Linda Jenkins, though, right? Because you didn't put your full name.
Yes, my name is Linda Jenkins.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Jenkins. I've been a paraprofessional in the Scranton School District for more than twenty-two years. I'm asking you to reconsider your decision to furlough all paraprofessionals. Scranton can follow the model that many local districts have successfully used to keep paraprofessionals engaged in the education of students through virtual learning. Our students need so much more extra help during these uncertain times. Parents have voiced concerns about the frustration both students and they are having adapting to virtual learning. These are some of the tasks we can and have been already doing. We can make copies and packets for struggling students since some of them have not yet received their Chromebooks. We can also help with the distribution of these packets. We could set up Google Classrooms and offer office hours for students who need help completing as well as understanding work assignments. We could also assist with progress monitoring and attendance. This would free up more time for the teachers to teach. These are only a few of the tasks that come to mind. There are many others that would benefit the students and help them to make the virtual learning experience successful. Since our schools have closed in March, we have been doing many of these tasks. Let's face it, we're not here for the money. We're here for our students, who we love and who also love us. Our students have taught us so many other things. We work with many students who come into school hungry, tired. They need our support. We've bought books, Halloween costumes, gloves, hats, and many other necessities for these students. Additionally, considering the revelations reported last week by the school district, the state attorney general's office, and local news regarding the unsafe air and water conditions that many of us have worked in and have been exposed to for decades, I'm asking you to reconsider the suspension or cancellation of healthcare benefits for any Scranton School District employee during any furlough period. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Linda.
Next, we have Diane Walsh. Diane? Diane Walsh, you're muted. Diane Walsh? Diane Walsh? Ms. Walsh? Okay, I think, can we go back, Katie?
Of course. Was Ms. Walsh signed into the meeting at one point?
She's, no, I see she's here on the meeting, but we can't hear her.
And is she in as a panelist?
She's in as a panelist, and she was muted, and then now it's not muted, but we still can't hear her.
Okay.
She's raising her hand.
Ms. Walsh, if you'd like to leave the meeting and come back in, we will certainly come back around to you. Ginny, do you want to go on to the next?
Okay.
And we'll come back.
All right. Rosemary Bolland? Rosemary, you're muted.
Hey now.
We can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, directors and administrators. Thank you for rescheduling this meeting and getting this done correctly tonight. We appreciate that. I think, uh, we were helped along in this endeavor. And we thank, of course, Judge Nealon and Judge Munley for their help by putting forward the injunction and, uh, asking this board or directing the board to redo the meeting, all of it. I think everything you've heard tonight from our paraprofessionals speaks volumes for the work they do every single day of the week. But I would like to let you know that ever since the date of September thirtieth was announced, it was a nightmare for me every single day of the week because every single day of the week, I was told people had no healthcare. Then they did have healthcare, then they didn't have healthcare, then they did have healthcare. When we exited the court on Friday, I had eleven people on my phone in the morning in our office that told me their doctors told them they had no healthcare. I was told at the door to the courtroom that not to worry. All they had to do was pay the doctor and submit the bill, and the district would take care of it. When did the Scranton School District communicate that to the paraprofessionals? When did they communicate it to me leaving the courtroom on Friday afternoon? This is outrageous. It is high time that our district practiced good communications. If that is so, if that message had to be delivered to the paraprofessionals that yes, indeed, they did have healthcare, then that should have been an aught call to those people. It's ridiculous that they were never told that they had healthcare. They were told they didn't. Today, today, this morning, I received a call from a teacher in the district. Her husband's doctor said they didn't have healthcare since nine-one of two thousand and twenty. I couldn't understand what the nine-one, September one, I don't know where that number would come from. I don't understand how that happened, and I still do not understand how that happened. But finally, Millennium took care of it. Some mistakes happen. We get that. Everybody makes mistakes. But these mistakes are becoming more and more the regular rather than the irregular. And I'm asking you, the board, to do your due diligence and direct your employees in the central administration building to communicate way better than they're doing with the people who work for them, the people who sacrifice every single day working in this district for the kids, with the kids, assisting teachers, assisting administrators every day of the week. This is no way to treat an employee during a pandemic, especially during a pandemic, because all I heard last week were people calling the office crying, worried to death that, do I have insurance? I'm being told I don't have insurance. I don't have insurance. The judge said I do have insurance. This was totally and completely unnecessary. It's an embarrassment to the Scranton School District. You just heard your administrators telling you what's demanded of the classroom teachers. They make it sound like it's simple. You just heard parents tell you it's not so simple. It's not simple for anybody. This is a difficult time, a very difficult time. And if I sound angry, it's because I am angry. For me to have eleven phone calls a day, eighteen phone calls a day from people scared to death, that is absolutely not necessary. Nobody should be scared like this. And I say shame on everybody for this because it was absolutely wrong. It didn't have to happen. And other people in other school districts know there's nothing illegal about it. So I encourage you, the board, to do your due diligence tonight. Have some empathy, for God's sake, and allow these people to continue with their healthcare. They pay bi-weekly. They paid last Friday when we were in court.
Rosemary, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Well, I'm gonna finish it. We were last Friday in court, and they paid their premium out of their paychecks last Friday. You have to know that. So I expect you, the board, to accommodate these people and allow them to continue participating in the healthcare plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you, Kitty.
Okay, Diane Walsh? Diane? Okay, we're gonna move on. Erin Harris?
Mrs. Orr, can you get the call-in number to Ms. Walsh, perhaps? I, I know you are doing fourteen jobs right now. Use your toes to send that email, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Erin Harris?
Jenny, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Erin.
Okay, great. Um, good evening, everyone. I'm Erin Harris, and I'm a paraprofessional in the Scranton School District for over twenty-five years. As I stated, the last time that I spoke to the board during the August thirty-first meeting. Um, as I do agree with Mrs. Coin about having physical books, um, I believe it's a good thing. I do have some questions regarding the accelerated ed platform. Uh, during, during the June twenty-ninth meeting, it stated that the school board or the school district wanted to spend two hundred thousand dollars on the accelerated ed platform uh, with using the Caritas Act money. Uh, that was going to include six core subjects for grades K through five, training for teachers and administrators. Um, but we're gonna come with digital books. So, um, I guess the board had said that the digital workbook, um, would work and it would be interactive. So I have some questions. So, my first questions are, is, how many bids came in for the virtual platform? The next one is, where did the money come for, come from for the accelerated book, uh, physical books that the district then paid for? Uh, how did the company obtain our students' addresses if the books are being sent to their homes? Um, why was a directive sent out on October first that stated workbooks were sent out? Why was a directive sent out on October 1st that stated workbooks were sent out? They didn't know how or why, and that the students could just keep them. So what I have done is I and some other people that I know have sent out some write-to-know letters because we have some questions for the Scranton School District and the vendor that I believe is the NEIU regarding this, the, these actions. So if you could get those questions answered at some point, that would be great. I also wanted to just quick change topic and go to our health insurance. I was told on October 1st by Lisa from Millennium that, in fact, we were canceled as of 12:01 October 1st. I was told Friday by a gentleman named Joe from Millennium that no one from the district informed Millennium of the court injunction until after hours on Wednesday. So I'm just honestly just very sad and very disgusted with what is happening here. I would hope that the board would rethink taking away the health care for furloughed paraprofessionals. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. And if you would, please email your questions to Mrs. Orr. I was jotting them down, but I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Thank you.
Katie, I'd be happy to answer very quickly a couple, if you would, for me. And Mrs. Gribek, I want you to correct me because I was not involved in this process, but I want to make sure I'm correct. There were three bids that were in the sealed bid process. I just needed, yes, is that correct? Yes or no? Okay, we already addressed how we paid for them in my earlier statement. Maybe you weren't, maybe you weren't on then. But we already addressed how we paid for the workbooks. That was building level budgets. And individual buildings use some of their AI money. Is that correct, Anne?
Yes, that's correct.
And achievement money. We addressed that. And the address part was the template when we were enrolling the students. That was part of the template that was included was the address. So that should cover those three. And I'm sorry, I have no idea what you're talking about, a directive on October 1st. Can you clarify who that individual was, please?
I would have to just go back. I could actually send it to you if you would like me to.
Sure, I would like to know.
I will, I will send it to you then.
Okay, thank you very much. And that should answer all your other questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Missy.
Amanda Van Buskirk?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Amanda.
Okay. Good evening, board directors and superintendent. I am excited about the bell game, of course, but for my own safety, I will be staying at home and watching it on TV and rooting for each team. My motto is, even though I graduate from Scranton High School, I hope each team does their best at the bell game this week. And I wish both teams good luck. And I thank everyone for supporting the schools. And that's it.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Good to see you.
You too.
Next, we have Agnes Jones.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good evening, Superintendent McTiernan and school board members. My name is Agnes Jones, kindergarten paraprofessional and SFD member. Jackie, I have to say you did a nice job with what you had offered tonight. I currently work at McNichols Plaza. I love my students. I love my job. This past month has been one of the most stressful periods in my life. Been through a lot. Husband almost died, children fought in Iraq, son-in-law Afghanistan. And I'm telling you, I feel really stressed. Ended in the emergency room on Monday. Worried, do I have coverage? Am I gonna have coverage when I have to go back on Monday? But all set aside, I believe paraprofessionals do an amazing job. I work daily with two wonderful kindergarten, kindergarten teachers. Love seeing the children. I believe they love seeing us. They are full of joy. And I'm just asking, reconsider what we're, the furlough, of course, less of insurance. And I will continue to work until otherwise. And I went way off topic, had a lot more to say, but the motions have gotten me. So thank you for listening and have a good night.
Thank you, Agnes.
Diane Walsh, are you there? Diane? Okay, moving on. There's a Chrissy Maderos that signed up to speak, but I'm unable to locate her in the attendees. And I did email her. Oh, I see a hand here. Christina, are you Chrissy Maderos? Christina? Okay. Diane Walsh, are you there? All right, moving on. Amy Martin. I'm so sorry. Amy Martin?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I've always believed in the power of words and their ability to transcend the limits of time and purpose. The ability to soften hearts, bring change into both cause or dry tears. What saddens me at this moment is that no matter what words are spoken here tonight, most of your minds are made up, and this meeting is just a formality. Many teachers and community members feel that you are not listening. You do not see our struggles, our work ethics, our extreme dedication to the education of Scranton's youth, and our dedication to each other. You do not see the hours that we are putting in to create resources, inventive ways to communicate with students, or how many times we look at our own children's faces just to feel their disappointment that we can't play with them. Sorry, my emotions are getting, you know, too. Just to give you a glimpse of why teachers need help, please consider this. If all of my students do their work, that's 52 submissions I need to check, correct, and give feedback for daily. There are students or parents with questions. Even tonight, I was speaking to a parent around 6:30, arranging to help them get a Chromebook for their student. Live Google meets, creating resources to complement our teaching, lesson planning, helping students individually, grading tests and quizzes, visiting homes, chasing down students that haven't been submitting work, or phoning some parents multiple times because they are not responding or work opposite shifts from us. There are so many things we could use or need extra help with from the paraprofessionals. Earlier today, I asked a few teachers if there was anything they wanted me to say tonight on their behalf. One teacher told me that she is a better teacher now than when she didn't work with her current paraprofessional. While the pair is helping with daily tasks, the teacher is able to truly focus on the needs of our students. Paraprofessionals enable us to be at our best. Another teacher rattled off a list of tasks a paraprofessional could assist with, including, but not limited to, helping with Google meets, small group instruction, fluency work, progress monitoring, and benchmarking. Those are just some examples. Tonight, you have a second chance, a second chance to help us. It doesn't happen often that you vote and then get to do it again. I probably don't need to tell you that this is a serious time in our community, a time when we need to support and care for each other the most. You can't furlough over 100 people during a national pandemic, not only because of the loss of income and benefits, but also because there is so much work they could be doing. At the Gettysburg Address, Abraham Lincoln spoke, saying, "The world will little note, nor long remember what we say here, but it can never forget what they did here." You may not care nor remember what our community said tonight, but your vote will determine what we remember. President Lincoln also said, "And that government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from the earth." If this is a true democracy and you are sitting there because we voted for you to be there, then it is your job to vote based on the needs and wishes of the people. When it is your turn to cast a vote, please remember.
Amy, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Yep. Can I just finish the sentence? Sorry. Please remember Abraham Lincoln, and don't let democracy perish tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Next, we have Molly Cosgrove. Molly?
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Hello. My name is Molly Cosgrove, and I'm writing to you in support of getting the schools in this Grand School District open in a hybrid setting. The district had an excellent plan to get our students in the classroom two days a week. Students being at home and learning on the computer is not working. I am the parent of 11th grade student at West Granton High School. We are one of the only districts in Lackawanna County to be fully remote. This is putting our students at an enormous disadvantage. Many families are turning to cyber and private schools. I know the school district is struggling financially, and the district is saving money by being remote. The financial burden of this school district is not the fault of the students. Great students are struggling. Mental health issues are at an all-time high. Children need socialization. There are so many students that are slipping through the cracks and are in dire need of in-person support. I am confident that this can be done. I am employed by an area school district that has been doing a hybrid platform for six weeks. We are following the Department of Health guidelines of wearing masks and maintaining six feet apart. There are plans in place if a student or staff member should get sick. The Scranton School District has already done all of the hard work. The well-developed plan was worked on all summer. As a certified school nurse, I am well aware of how dangerous this virus can be and its spread. By putting the necessary safety measures in place, our students can be back where they belong at school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Molly.
Next, we have Joe Healy, but I, I'm sorry, I do not see him in the attendees. I don't see a Joe Healy. We're gonna move on to Suzanne Fury. Suzanne?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just have a question that I hope at some point will be answered, and I was wondering at some point if you could give an update about the HVAC system at Neil Armstrong. Just wondering, it's been talked about for a long time. I'm wondering if you can tell us when the repair will take place. But I am also here to talk about, of course, our paraprofessionals. And because of the pandemic, the teachers are teaching virtually. I am still responsible to teach my first grade students. My daily tasks are still there, but how they are completed has changed. That can also be said for our paraprofessionals. Their work has not disappeared because we are virtual. If anything, it has increased. But the manner in which they complete their tasks has changed. The students' needs are still there, but we've got to work differently to meet those needs. You are asking what the paraprofessionals can do. You have heard so much about what the paraprofessionals can do. Taking attendance, contact, we, we as teachers have a constant flood of questions, concerns. Parents need help. And I'm one person, and I try to do everything I can to reach every parent that I could. I assign six to eight lessons a day. I'm doing live lessons every day. I'm doing recorded lessons every day. The, the help that a paraprofessional could give to a teacher is numerous, so much, and I know I'm even getting a little bit emotional about this, but correcting work, giving feedback, grading papers, giving extra help, explaining directions, helping parents that have questions. These questions have not stopped coming because we're in school a month. Technology issues are daily issues. The accelerated ed program is not an easy program to navigate in the elementary. I, my parents are doing a phenomenal job, but I also have parents that I can't contact that, that it's, we're chasing down and trying to find people and trying to get them working and to help them with issues. And I can go on and on and on. We need every person in the district, but I think what bothers me the most is I, I get the impression that the paraprofessionals were not really considered to be part of that plan. They are employees of the district. They have a vital role. And just because we are not in person, their role is not any less important. And I strongly urge you to help the students of this district and the families by keeping the paraprofessionals. We need them, and they need you right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Chrissy Maderos, are you here? Christina? We can't hear you. We can't hear you. That would be our last speaker. I'm not sure.
Hello?
We can hear you now.
Thank you. Did you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. Okay, so there's just a few things that I'd like to say regarding, I have two children. I'm a single mother, and I have two kids, 10 and seven, in the Willard Elementary School. And just so you know, I work for the Department Labor of Industry. So as you can see from the calls that were, well, the people that have, you know, been on the meeting, that that is actually a very important position right now. I actually had to take an FMLA status just so that I could homeschool my two children as of Monday because I do not believe that the AE program that you have implemented, there is no way that a seven-year-old can navigate through that system without having adult supervision constantly. I have no idea what my 10-year-old is doing because I do not have time to sit there and monitor him as well. I'm working from home, and I just want you to know, which other parents have, you know, expressed during this time, that it is an extremely stressful situation. In regards to the AE program, you said that you implemented workbooks. But how are you supposed to do the workbooks if you don't have access to the system? Many of the workbooks, you have to read a story, which are on the AE app. How are you supposed to read a story without having a Chromebook, without having high-speed internet, and still be able to do the work that's in the workbook? Unfortunately, due to the circumstances, I, I'm only working half-days, which means that is not a very good situation for the community in the position that I hold. So I just wanted to express that. And then from what I'm hearing is that now that truancy letters are going to be implemented as well. So now, if you have four or five children within a household, and you cannot give everybody a Chromebook, how are you supposed to have that many children and actually be able to? and actually be able to have all the children do the work with one Chromebook? I don't know if that is true. It's what I'm hearing. I'd like to address that, that now you're actually going to have truancy letters sent out to these individuals? How are we supposed to do all of this? How are we supposed to be a mother? How are we supposed to work nine to five? You get off of work, you need to cook dinner, then you need to clean up, and on top of that, you need to do four to five hours of schoolwork? That is impossible. I hear a lot about teacher unions. I hear a lot about everything else, but I am not hearing the stress that is carrying down to the parents that have to ensure that their children are doing, doing their work. I have gotten multiple phone calls that my 10-year-old, who has ADHD and ODD, that he's submitting blank, blank paperwork. He's not doing what he's supposed to be doing. How am I supposed to monitor a seven-year-old and a 10-year-old?
I'm sorry, Christina, your time is up.
That's nice. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Christina. We do have a time limit for all of our speakers. Mrs. Orr, is there anyone else you've been able to locate?
I, I have not been able to, well, Diane Walsh, I think she signed off, and then Joe Healy. I do not see a Joe Healy here. And I did email him to see if he was still going to speak, and I did not get a response, so. And that, those are the only two that I couldn't.
And I, I will just say that in accordance with Policy 903, we would defer all public comment to the next scheduled or special meeting, should those two individuals somehow want to make a comment. They'll be able to do so under Policy 903 at our next scheduled meeting.
And Jenny, you did have two people who declined to comment this evening, and you do have record of that, correct?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Thank you, and thank you, John. Okay. Moving on to the motion to approve meeting minutes of August 31st, 2020. You have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed? We will have a motion to improve, to approve the consent agenda. These are the consent agenda items for this evening and also most of the items from the September 14th meeting. You have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I will second that.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
I have to ask you to pardon me for one moment. I forgot to pull this up on the iPad. I'm sorry about that. Under Budget and Finance, we will have a motion to approve. Sorry, I feel like I'm out of order here.
We need E4. Before we do the.
We're doing B4 and then E4.
Okay.
The motion to approve the 2020 General Obligation Bonds Authorizing Resolution.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I was reading the bottom part of this, and the information is here. Sorry, I had myself turned around. We will have a motion authorizing the adoption by the Board of School Directors of the Scranton School District of the City of Scranton of a resolution authorizing the issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds for the purposes of funding a project consisting of the following: planning, designing, acquiring, constructing, installing, furnishing, and equipping of alterations, renovations, additions, and improvements to existing facilities of the Scranton School District, purchasing capital equipment for use in or in connection with the facilities of the school district, additional capital projects of the school district to the extent approved by the Board of School Directors of the school district, funding capitalized interest on the bonds, and paying the costs and expenses of issuance of the bonds, all as more fully described in the complete text of the resolution. The aggregate principal amount is not to exceed $42,500. We have a motion?
So moved? I'll second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin? Nine affirmative.
Now, E4, we are moving to the Operations Department. We will have a motion to approve the expense abatement bid packet number two, change order. The amount is $12,020. And am I correct that this was, I'm sorry, may, may have a motion. I'll ask that on the question.
So moved?
You have a second?
Second. I'll second.
On the question?
On the question, oh, I, I just wanted to ask Mr. Laffey if he would just briefly explain change orders. Sometimes the general public might not understand how they work and the amount that has to, that, that if it's over, needs to be approved by the board.
Certainly, yes. So a, a change order for, for a project like this would be any cost that would be incurred above what was previously authorized by the school board. I do not have the, the number in front of me of what the bid project two was awarded for, but this $12,020 was above and beyond that. As Mr. Doherty stated at the work session, the, the overall summer abatement projects, both one and two, actually came in combined under the awarded, the two awarded amounts. But this particular project, due to additional scope of work related that was discovered, you know, incurred an additional $12,000. Our school board policy 831 requires board authorization or board approval of any change orders over 5,000. So that's why we presented it for you this evening.
Thank you, Pat. That was part of what I was going to clarify about the overall sum of the two projects.
Thank you.
Yeah, if, if the, the, the two combined projects, I think, were somewhere in the, around $20,000 under the total budget. Mr. Doherty, I'm sure has the.
Yeah, I, I believe it was close to $26,000 under budget between the, the two projects. And this $12,000 was not like an increase in cost for what the initial scope of work was. While the abatement contractor was at, was at, it was at West Granton High School doing the work, there was additional areas that were found when, when Kichardi was brought in to examine those. They said, hey, they're here, so we wouldn't have to pay like mobilization costs. Like, do we want to make this change and get this extra bid out of here right now? And at that point, I was like, all right, give me the numbers, and when I knew we were going to be, you know, coming in about $38,000 less than the other package, that's when I said, well, certainly, we want to, you know, take out that additional piece. But I wanted the board to know this is for additional abatement, not an increase in cost of the original scope of work.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Your favorite director. I just wanted to say that, for those who, members of the public who weren't at the work session last week, that the work that's been done at Northeast Intermediate School has been thorough, professional, wonderfully handled by Kichardi and Darton, and ably supervised by Paul, Mr. Doherty, and Carl Paglisi, our very newly certified asbestos inspector. I think that the comments that were made by the Attorney General last week in his announcement here about the charges was applauded, the thoroughness and the speed with which this current administration reacted to the asbestos crisis when it came to their, to their attention. And that not only did they act where others did not, they acted with speed, they acted with professionalism. And quite honestly, we are now in a position where when we do go back to school, God willing, very shortly, Northeast Intermediate School in the new section of the school and the auditorium have what Dr. Finan likes to call pristine air. They have been fantastically cleared of asbestos, the new section and the auditorium, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, they are completely free of asbestos.
They're completely, yeah, free of damaged asbestos, yes.
Yeah. There are areas there that are completely contained and perfectly safe and
Correct.
but the danger that we were in with our children in January due to circumstances beyond the control of this administration is abated. And I just wanted personally, having worked on the Environmental Task Force with Mr. Doherty and the members of the public, thank everyone for the speed of their response, for their immediate understanding of the gravity of the situation when they learned of it, and for the fact that we have now, with the help of a lot of hard work and a lot of good people, reached a situation where Northeast is safe for every member of staff and every student. So thank you.
Thank you. And, and again, we did, it was a lot of people that worked hard on this, and, and including certainly the school board members and, and members of the public, like that, that were, were clicked to, you know, give opinions and lend their voice, and I think this is a true team effort and, and an example of how a community could come together to overcome a problem. I mean, at the end of the day, everyone working together, there was 40 tons of asbestos that was abated from our buildings over the course of these two projects, and and I think that's certainly kudos and, and a congratulations and, and a, you know, good work to everyone that's been involved, you know, board members and community as well.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's a credit to everyone involved, and I am very grateful to have been a small part of it.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
And now E5, we will have a motion to approve the RFP for the Isaac Trip Access Road in the amount of They have a motion?
I so move.
Second?
The second.
On the question?
Just briefly, Mr. Doherty, can we just remind the public that this is the access road to Isaac Trip, which I understand long difficulties with which long predate my involvement with the school board, but that it has been an ongoing problem since the construction of Isaac Trip, and it is now remediated permanently? If you could just give us a brief description of the problem.
That is, that is the bus access road. That's the only traveling that gets done on it. It's at the start of the day and the end of the day. It, it's a stretch of road about 600 feet long by about 20 feet wide. It has never been paved since that building was opened. So every year after it rains or after it snows and it's plowed, I mean, you can imagine the condition, and over the years, the solution has been to lay some stone on there and roll the stone, but then as soon as it rains, ruts would develop again, and it really was a, a, a safety issue. I am proud to say that right now there's, you know, a beautiful four-to-six-inch pavement that's laid on that. And, you know, one of the things that, when it was decided we were going to go fully virtual, one of the first things to enter my mind was like, no, I want a bus. I want a bus to go down that road. But we're excited to use it, and it's a, it's a beautiful road. The company was tremendous to, to work with, Waco. They were by far the lowest bid by, by close to $100,000. They were the lowest bidder. It was less than what GPI expected the bids to come in at. You know, they were expecting bids in the $75,000 to $80,000 range. I think this one was in the neighborhood of the high 40s. And, you know, when they were done with the road, they went around with their blacktop and fixed all the potholes that were in the Isaac Trip parking lot with the extra that they had. But the project is, you know, it, it was overdue, but we're very, very happy that it's done now.
Thank you. I'm very tempted, Mr. Doherty, to ask for a photo of you in the front seat of the bus on the first ceremonial ride.
Paul, you did mention the company name. I neglected to state that in the motion. So perhaps that should be added, Jenny. Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Thank you. Now we will go back to our regular order here, B5. We have a motion to approve the capital project bill as attached.
I so move.
Second?
I'll second. Um, I said something like her.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
B6, we will have a motion to approve the amendment to the proposal for appraisal, appraisal services from Valbridge Property Advisors. Previously approved on June 29th, 2020. Wyoming Avenue will see an increase of $500 from $3,750 to $4,250. And 614 and 620 Wyoming Avenue will see a $1,500 increase from $5,000 to $6,500. The financial impact, of course, being $2,000. The original proposal only included tax year 2020. The increased fee will add 2021 tax year to the appraisal report with the potential for an increase in assessment. They have a motion?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
C1, we will have a motion to approve a collaboration with the Wright Center to share information with our families regarding various services offered via the website, Google Classroom, social media, and at the building level once open, promote free employee self-care wellness initiatives that will be offered by the Wright Center, pilot student and family support groups at Charles Sumner Adams and Kennedy with a tentative start date, second quarter, added support at the building level for additional counseling services for students and SSD families, with more information to be announced. The team will continue to collaborate with the Wright Center throughout the year to collect data and improve programming and meet the needs of our students, staff, and community. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
A second.
On the question? Does this arrangement interfere in any way with any advertising rates that we have? I mean, it, it seems as though this might be in exchange for, uh, offering services to our community, to our students and their families and, and our staff as well. But in exchange for perhaps some promotion of the Wright Center, I just want to make sure that that doesn't interfere with the, um, advertising rate established for many of our facilities.
Director Gil Martin, that has not been mentioned to me at all. Um, but, uh, I know Mr. Gentilez, Gentiles is on this call.
Yeah, I, I, not, not that I'm aware of, Ms. Good Martin. I don't, I don't think that's going to interfere in any way.
Dr. Finan, have, I know we've discussed the rental rate proposal as, as part of, or the rental rate schedule, rather, as part of the recovery talks. Has there been any discussion of the advertising plan and do you have any reservations about this?
We have not had any discussions about the advertising plan formally. I, I don't even think it's a, a topic in our recovery plan, but it is something that generally speaking, we should look at moving forward. I have not had any discussions about this particular issue. I know we discussed, um, some of the rental costs and advertising costs at the beginning of the, or, you know, in the summer, but we haven't done any further follow-up. I think it, it could be, um, an item that we discuss in the next couple of months. We can look at that.
Is, is there a timeframe with this agreement first? Is there a, because I'm just thinking if this is something we are doing with an end date, if we're not at that point where we're having those, those conversations where we could be in a situation where we've made an arrangement with this group that then ties our hands with, uh, setting up an arrangement with someone else, if this has a completion date, that would make me feel a little more comfortable.
Well, like, like the, um, motion said, it's going to start probably roughly start in the second quarter and go, going forward from there. As far as an end date, I mean, I just think this is something that we'd like to go forward, you know, as, as long as possible.
And, uh, Mrs. Duffy is informing me that there's no fees whatsoever.
And I, I do not believe this ties our hands with, with, with offering services through any other agency. I mean, Katie, I'm sure, I mean, you know, because you've been on the board so long, we've had a, a, a really a multi-year partnership with the Wright Center. They actually have a portion of our facility over at West Intermediate where they've been servicing, uh, you know, uh, really the whole West Granton community. And if people walk in there without insurance, they get seen and, and they really, um, really that was dynamic, having a school-based health center. And I think really this program is, is really an extension of that. They're saying now we can offer, you know, uh, more services. I don't think we're under any obligation to, to only use the Wright Center.
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're getting free services, there's nothing to say that we can't turn around and say we don't want to, want them anymore. I, I didn't see anything that's tying us to anything. They're, they're offering us free services. We're taking advantage of those free services is my understanding of all of this. And if at any point we don't want it, want them, then we'll say we don't want them. I, I don't, I, nobody's ever mentioned anything as far as, uh, Director Gil Martin, as far as what, what you stated. And we wouldn't have to, we're not, we're not agreeing to, we're not agreeing to that. Um, that's not, that was never put on the table.
So, I mean, there, essentially there is no contract here. This is an agreement. As long as everybody's happy, we can move forward. If at any time we feel this isn't a good fit, we can move on.
That's my understanding. I have not signed any contracts and, and
There, there is no contract.
Well, we should be covered.
Right. If there was an agreement or a contract, you'd be signing it. So you would have seen it. So, um, my, what I'm going to, uh, ask Mr. Gentiles to do is to make sure that, you know, there is no agreement and there is no contract, but I can state that I have not signed anything and you sign all the contracts and you have not signed anything. So.
This, Mrs. Duffy is blowing up my phone telling me there is no contract. It is simply a community partnership.
All right. Settle down. And the, the data collection piece of all of this, that, that is appropriate in this realm? We're comfortable with all of that?
Yes.
Anybody else have anything to say about this?
I want more data.
Uh, I guess since there's no monetary obligation here, we can simply yea or nay, correct, Mr. Doughty? Okay. All in favor? Thank you for the thumbs up. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item C two, we will have a motion to approve donations from donorschoose.com to Neil Armstrong Elementary for speech therapy items, including a computer, printer, and webcam. Uh, the donations totaled six hundred and fourteen dollars. You have a motion?
Make the motion.
You have a second?
A second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Before we move on, Katie, I think that whoever gave us that through that program, and I think it's a great program. I think, um, having had a grandson who's had speech therapy, I can only say how much these items will be appreciated and well-used.
Thank you. D one, we will have a motion to approve the Title One Schoolwide Plan for South Scranton Intermediate School. You have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
On the question? On the question, I just want to clarify that this paperwork was due on Monday. So as you all know, we came to consensus and, uh, did allow that paperwork to be submitted with my signature, but I know, I, Molly, I believe the dates and the information in this vote will be recorded on that paperwork and it will be noted that we approve this retroactively.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. E one, we will have a motion to authorize Greenman Peterson to provide survey and civil engineering services for the Memorial Stadium track replacement. The scope of the work will include a topographic study, geotechnical investigation, schematic design, preparation of construction documents, assisting with the bidding process and construction administration. The total is sixty-two thousand dollars. May I have a motion?
I so move.
You have a second?
A second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
E two, we will have a motion to authorize Greenman Peterson to assess the ventilation systems in all district schools and administration building and the administration building. The scope of the work will include building surveys to assess the age and functionality of each ventilation system. An assessment report will be provided, itemizing recommended system corrections. The cost for engineering services is twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
You have a second?
Second.
On the question?
Um, Ms. Good Martin, I wonder if we could ask Mr. Doughty to just explain the background of this very briefly?
Sure.
Certainly. Um, this act recommendation actually came out of, uh, a recommendation from Nicole Westerman of PFM. Uh, knowing the age of our buildings and that we do have ventilation systems in all of our buildings that are functioning. But she thought it would be particularly at this time, a good idea to do a study to see if there's any upgrades that are needed to modernize the ventilation systems. Is there anything we can do, um, to make sure that our ventilation systems are, um, what they should be in the twenty-first century? Um, I'm not sure what recommendations will come from this. But, uh, when she, uh, did make that recommendation, you know, I thought, I, you know, and as I looked at it, that was a pretty smart recommendation because there, I think there are some things we can do to make sure that even with some older systems, there might be some enhancements we could do to make sure that our ventilation systems are working more efficiently than they were initially designed for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I think it's, uh, great to take a proactive approach like this. So thank you to Nicole as well for her recommendation. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
E six, we will have a motion to approve the disposal of assets at Northeast Intermediate School. The administration has prepared a summary of the items to be disposed of that are no longer usable. This will assist in preparing for the eventual return to in-person instruction. They have a motion.
I so move.
You have a second?
A second.
The question?
Would this be a good time for maybe a very brief summary of what's being proposed?
Yes. Thank you.
Um, we are on, I'm sorry, Katie, we're on E six?
Yes.
Yeah, we skipped it. We'll go back to E three.
Okay.
Director Gil Martin, Mr. Haney's on that I can address this.
Yes, he is.
Oh, I did miss E three.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having us. Uh, one of the issues we had when we went through everything with the asbestos, as you're all aware, is, uh, there are many items that were, uh, stored throughout our building, uh, for probably forty, fifty-plus years. So some of those items, uh, were taken out because they were covered in asbestos, uh, material. So those items were taken at the time by the companies in that process, but, uh, what our maintenance department did was they went through, uh, everything in the building. We made sure all of these storage areas, I mean, we had, uh, electrical areas that nothing should be in those rooms that had items all over in there. So, uh, they cleared everything out and what we have on those lists are items that are either, uh, in disrepair, uh, that there's nothing that can be done with them, or items that are still useful, but we cannot be stored in our building. So, uh, either other buildings, uh, if other, uh, buildings need file cabinets or things like that, they could take them. Or we have to determine how to get rid of them, but, uh, we cannot store these things in our buildings anymore, uh, for the, you know, hazard that they pose.
Thank you. And Mr. Laffey, can you, uh, just let us all know why this step is necessary, why we must approve the disposal of these items?
Certainly. Uh, the, uh, the school board policy, excuse me, seven oh six deals with school district property and, and assets. And there's a corresponding administrative regulation that requires board approval for the disposal of any asset over four thousand dollars. As Mr. Haney noted, these items, I think were in storage possibly for many years. Uh, I, the records on these are probably not, nonexistent. So not knowing what the original cost was related to some of these, the, the appreciable life on them when they were acquired, we felt it was best right now to, uh, have the board authorize this, this disposal in accordance with the policy. Was, you know, assuming that these assets may have one time been over that threshold.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Yes, and I apologize, we need to go back to E three. I was concentrating so hard on not saying E four, E five, that I skipped over our front. So, E three, we will have a motion to authorize Karchardi and Associates to provide a study and services to remediate and reoccupy the nineteen oh four section of Northeast Intermediate School. The scope of work will include a study to address the asbestos-containing materials in the ventilation system, preparation of bid documents, assisting with the bidding process, and construction administration. The financial impact is as listed in the attached proposal. Which here, uh, it's an estimated cost of twenty-four hundred seventy dollars to forty-five hundred and ninety dollars for part one, part two, fifty-seven twenty to seventy-eight fifty. Part three is, uh, just the hourly rates. So I believe, Pat, am I missing anything that I should have stated there? I think I've covered the financial impact.
Yes, I believe you have.
Yes, you're, you're correct, uh, Director Gil Martin. That, that phase three is actually the construction administration piece. So that cost will vary based upon the scope of work that is determined and, you know, how it's going to be done. But that, that's very similar to how, uh, Karchardi has been supervising all the other projects that we've had ongoing.
Okay.
But this is the first step for us, um, to reoccupy the old section of, of Northeast Intermediate, should the board decide to move forward with this project.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on the question?
So just to clarify, that three hundred dollars is essentially, um, the three hundred dollars per hour, which includes the project oversight, SHG professional. So it's kind of that, that's the hourly rate for labor costs in total.
Not quite. I think I, I sort of misrepresented that a little bit. That's the final report cost, three hundred dollars. Um, there, the project oversight by field technician at ninety dollars an hour, project
Okay.
At a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, analytic, uh, PCM air. First five included, each additional twelve dollar, twenty-four hour, uh, TAT, analytical TEM air, uh, twenty-four hour turnaround at eighty-four fifty a sample and a forty-eight hour turnaround at sixty-five dollars a sample. So as Paul said, I mean, those are costs that will be determined as this project goes forward, but this is the menu of fees.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Motion F one, we will have a motion to approve the personnel reports, assignments, appointments, retirements, leaves of absences, and resignation. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
A second.
Roll call, I'm sorry, on the question?
Yes, on the question, I'm on behalf of the board of directors, I'd like to congratulate the new hires and appointees and thank those who are leaving us for their years of service and dedication to the students of the district. Thank you.
Katie, I just want to confirm, did you say F, you said F two we're doing, right? Motion to approve the personnel report? You blanked out on me.
F one.
It's F one.
Okay, maybe I'm looking at the wrong. Okay, so it's F one is to motion to approve the personnel report?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Two, we will have a motion to furlough with regret effective 12:00 AM Friday, October 9th, 2020. All paraprofessional PCA positions, six intervention specialists, two level-two intervention specialists. Four part-time maintenance, one LPN, one clerk, sixty-four crossing guards. And to authorize the superintendent to recall any furloughed employee as needed. Prescription benefits will terminate per contract the first of the month after thirty days from the last day of work. Medical benefits will expire the last day of employment. They have a motion.
I shall move.
May I have a second?
I'll start.
On the question?
On the question, if I may speak, I would just like to say. And I really don't want to discuss this again for the third time, but here I go. I think if we were to do this properly, and this is my opinion, we would furlough staff who truly have no work. And we would save our district financially. However, we would also furlough an equal percentage of administrative staff. And most importantly, we would provide health insurance to all furloughed staff. Just as the Pennsylvania Public Schools of Norristown, Erie, Hazelton area, and Pensbury are currently doing. We just spoke in our meeting about our community and the strength of our community in regards to the asbestos. This would be the perfect way, the right thing to do for our taxpayers, save ourselves financially where we can. But most especially, if we could provide health insurance for our employees in a worldwide pandemic. And these are the people who are taking care of our children in our schools. We're telling them, you've been working in the buildings that are under investigation for lead and asbestos. And that because you work in Scranton School District and not another school district, you don't get to have health insurance while you're furloughed. Until we can figure out how to get health insurance for our furloughed staff, I will be continuing to vote no.
Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I was a no a few weeks ago. I don't think it's fair across the board. I think there were some administration who, you know, the regular duties aren't able to be done, so they were given additional duties. I agree, you know, I want to go back to, I heard all the parents and the teachers, you know, the last few weeks with the virtual learning. I'm hoping we're in a hybrid model sooner than later, and I hope that's, you know, sooner than we anticipate. So, I mean, it's already, you know, the second week of October. I don't know if, you know, the timing of it right now, since it was delayed so much. You know, they should be, we might be asking them back relatively soon, so I'm going to be a no again tonight.
Director Gil Martin?
Yes.
Just in response and, and just briefly, because as people say, we have discussed this twice already. The furloughs are in no way a diminution of the role and the contribution that the power professionals have made to our district. We all value and appreciate their role, and there is not a member of this board that does not comprehend the human cost. And the disruption to the lives. I will just find that. We have obligations to our students, we have obligations to our staff, we have obligations to the power professionals. We have obligations to the taxpayer. I believe this is an incredibly difficult decision, but I do want people to understand this is not a decision the board is taking lightly. We are not taking it for financial reasons. This is a situation. Where a global pandemic that has disrupted every ordinary way of life, or I think every institution and business. Is going on, and unfortunately, I really regret that I will be voting yes. But it is in no way without the acknowledgement of the contribution of the power professionals or recognition of. What this will mean.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the question?
Katie, go ahead. You go ahead, Katie, sorry.
I was just going to say, I did ask Ms. Picard from Millennium Administrators to join us this evening. I know we've all received a lot of questions about the insurance and the impact that the injunction had. And Ms. Picard, perhaps if you could just give us a little bit of information about what happened and where we stand right now. I think you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. We were requested, obviously, by the district to initiate the Cobra paperwork for the furloughed employees, which we did do. And then we were informed that there was an injunction. So we had terminated basically 143 of those individuals and then had to go back manually to reinstate them. When a member did contact us related to their coverages, we did inform them that they were being put back into the system. And if they did have a treatment that they needed to receive from a physician. Or if they received a balance bill of any kind, that they should forward those, that information to Millennium, and we would have it adjusted. And readjusticate the claims. So I heard some of the public speak. We, I just want to assure you all that if there is any issue related to their coverages during that lapse of time. We will certainly make them whole and address that and get it resolved. Highmark communicated to us that they had to reinstate everyone manually. So that was part of some of the delay, and we just couldn't, after we terminated the first time, we couldn't just go back and retrieve and push a button and get them back. Into the system again. So that was part of some of the dynamic that you were hearing this evening.
Thank you.
I, I do have a question. Did we send any correspondence or any emails or letters to the employees letting them know? Of the issue that, you know, you might go and it might say you have no insurance, but you do, pretty much answering Rosemary's question.
Right, and to your point, John, I believe, was handling that whole initiative. We did forward and created the Cobra paperwork, so we initiated that on behalf of the district, and that did go out. That was also part of the, the conflict, because we mailed those Cobra letters and then we had to resend them. So everyone thought they had no coverage, obviously, because they received the Cobra letter. So to you, to your point, I'm pretty confident that John did communicate to folks as it related. This was about to occur after the meet, the first meeting that you voted on this initiative. And then he demanded that we initiate the Cobra paperwork right after. So it was a quick turnaround while we terminated, and then we had to resend it. So it was all a manual process on our end.
And Superintendent McKernan, did we send anything to employees? Like, did John send anything to the direct employees?
I really do not know the answer to that. We were instructed to terminate and to initiate Cobra paperwork. I do not know if he initiated any type of one call or an email. I don't have that answer. I apologize.
Director McAndrew, the only thing, I don't like to speak for anybody, but the only thing that I can say is that he was taking all of the phone calls. I do not think, I don't, but again, I don't want to state, but I'm not aware of paperwork going up. But I am aware that he was taking the, all of the phone calls, absolutely.
Yeah, and we were inundated with phone calls as well. So I know it was across the board. Everyone was trying to respond to them and to communicate to them what they needed to know. We also walked members through the marketplace options that are available to them based versus the Cobra rates. So we did, we were very accommodating for any member that called and was concerned about the dollar factor as it relates to another option for them.
Thank you. And certainly, if it hasn't already been communicated, we, we could certainly make clear the information Ms. Picard shared this evening. That if anyone experienced, you know, incurred a cost, I should say, that they will be made whole, as you said.
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I was going to say before, Katie, I'm sorry, Director Gil Martin. We're hearing. That there's no work for our paraprofessionals from the administration. And we're also hearing from some of our paraprofessionals, some of our teachers, that there is work or that some work could be found for them. During, during virtual learning. And that makes it a really close call. So I want to echo what Director Hume said. About how awful this whole thing is and about how awful I feel about it. And quite frankly, I'm not that far from where Director Yanni and Director McAndrew are. But we're also hearing about compassion. And fact of the matter is that I don't perceive my role as a school board director. As permitting me to be compassionate with taxpayer dollars. So that is why I'm leaning towards voting yes on the furloughs. Thank you.
Director Gil Martin, I just would like to say, I want to echo Jimmy's sentiments. It doesn't feel good. My head and my heart aren't aligned. But ultimately, these, this isn't my paycheck. This isn't my money to spend as I would want. I am also a rule follower, to my own demise sometimes, and our medical benefits by contract expire. It doesn't feel good. But there are things in life that it is what it is, and so my vote will be yes tonight.
I would just like to remind my fellow directors that we have been told by administration, this is not. We are not furloughing staff for economic or financial reasons. We are furloughing because there's no work. So I think that needs to play into your decision here as well.
I think we're all very clear on that. I, I certainly think that our colleagues are just trying to reiterate the fact. That this is not a cold-hearted decision, but I, I think it is very important. I keep thinking about the discussion of Act 13. And that by its expiration, it only strengthened the guidelines that school code provides. That we are in fact prohibited from compensating individuals for work that does not exist at this time. I myself am also a rule follower to the very best of my ability. But I think that Director Dempsey and Director Malloy make a very good point. That although any of us would, would love to just sign the check. And, and do what we can to support our neighbors. It is not in the purview of a school director to expend funds that are not necessary. And that, that is the, that to me is the situation we find ourselves in. The administration is telling us that there is no work. I am hearing what people are saying that they would be able to do. I am also understanding that this motion authorizes the superintendent to call back those employees that are needed at this time. And I think that's a very important piece of all of this. And, you know, I certainly think we have done our very best to do this as respectfully as we can. But as I've said, I would not, I would not ever imagine that there was anything I could say to soften the blow of a furlough at any time. And certainly not right now. So as we stayed in the motion, it is with regret that I will be casting my vote this evening.
And Director Gil Martin, I just want to clarify, my, my sentiments are not in paying to not furlough. It's that if we were to continue the benefits, it would by and large break the contract. And the district does have to pay a portion of the benefits. And so that, that is the taxpayer dollars I'm referring to, not necessarily. I, I completely understand that furloughing the paras is related to work specifically. My obligation, as I understand it, is if we were potentially to extend healthcare benefits, that would then be taxpayer dollars. Paying for medical coverage of, of an individual no longer employed and going beyond the expiration of a contract. That has an end date based on their furlough date. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And just one last brief word. I do know that the board asked. I know that the, the board asked Mr. Audi to investigate every possibility. And Mr. Audi, as he said so eloquently at the last meeting, he's not happy doing this. He did, at our request, look for every possible way that we could do this legally. And he could not find a legal way or any way that we could do, extend health benefits in a way that did not. Put the school district in breach of the regulations and put us in jeopardy of further legal action. From many sources. And so I just want to say that, that, that this is not something. Dickensian, it's not anything at all. We tried, we just weren't able to find a solution that was legal. And that satisfied the need, and I am so sorry.
Is anyone else on the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
No.
Ms. Cruz?
With regret, yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Seven affirmative, two negative, motion passes.
Thank you, Mrs. Orr. We will have G one, a motion to approve and adopt. The anti-racism resolution. As attached, supporting the development of an anti-racist school climate, climate, pardon me. May I have a motion?
I shall move.
May I have a second?
Second.
On the question?
I'd like to say that I'm very happy to see this being proposed in our district. As we all know, we are the largest district in Lackawanna County, and over half of our students. Are children of, of color and of multicultural backgrounds. And right now, we're living in a world where racism and discrimination and prejudice is blatantly. Coming from all sources, and so I'm very happy to see this proposed in our area, in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. This resolution is beautifully written and is, is available for your review. But I think it's important to state that now therefore be it resolved. The Scranton School Board unequivocally stands firm in our collective responsibility to foster an equitable and inclusive environment. For every student, staff member, parent, and community member. We commit to use our role as school board directors to recognize, respond, and speak out against injustice and racial inequity in our school community. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wilson, Carrie's. Motion H one, I apologize, it is slowly loading. We will have a motion to approve the Northeast Educational Intermediate Unit 19 Agreement for Special Education Programs and Services. For the 2020, 2021 school year as attached. May I have a motion? May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, on the question? May I have a roll call, please, Mrs. Orr?
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Ms. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
And finally, I one, we will have a motion to approve the Northeastern Transit Contract. Supporting two Western PA schools with deaf students to Camp Hill, Pennsylvania. reporting to Western P A school for the deaf students to Camp Hill, Pennsylvania. It is three hundred and ninety-five dollars per trip. Sixty-six trips times three hundred and ninety-five dollars totaling twenty-six thousand seventy dollars. May I have a motion?
I made the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
On the question? Roll call, please, Mrs. Orr?
Mrs. Welby?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Ms. Good Martin?
Yes.
Nine affirmative.
Do I have any new business? For the good of the order?
Director Gil Martin, I, um, if I may, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank, um, Mr. Gennalesa. This was, this week, we had our very first Equity Committee meeting, um, in the long process of developing an equity policy. And I wanted to thank him for putting that together and for a very thoughtful and thorough discussion. Um, I also wanted to take the time to thank Mr. McLeod and to also thank Mr. Odom, um, that both brought their stories to the table, um, opened the eyes of a lot of people that were attending that Equity meeting. And, and I think going forward, it's going to be very productive and it's, um, it's going to really benefit the children of, of our district, providing a more equitable and fair education to all of our students. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Gennalesa and of course, Mr. uh, Mr. McLeod and Mr. Odom as well. Thank you. And, and everyone that attended. It was, it was a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really delighted to see this work taking place. So I, I just want to, uh, thank everyone for their participation this evening. Again, I think we had some good dialogue around some very challenging topics. As Mrs. McTiernan noted, we will see you all back here, I believe, in the same Zoom room on October nineteenth. We will have a Policy Committee meeting, uh, followed by an Education Committee meeting because we, we do have to, uh, as I've said in so many emails, to which I replied today, work has been ongoing. Certainly in the effort, uh, to return to brick and mortar learning as soon as we possibly can. And you know, I think we, we can see on the news that this is a fluid situation to, say the very least. So we will continue to monitor the, uh, health and safety situation and be guided by those numbers as we make our decisions. But I, I think I can speak for everyone whose face is I'm looking at right now and, and probably all the, the names here on our list. I, we all know that brick and mortar learning is the ideal educational environment. And getting back there is absolutely everyone's goal, certainly doing it safely and responsibly. But we, we know that that, that's what everyone would like to see at the end of the day. So, you know, we certainly will look forward to hearing about the, uh, virtual experience at this meeting, but also addressing some of the questions and concerns that were brought forward as we debated the hybrid model, uh, several months ago. So thank you very much yet again. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Enjoy the rest of your evening, everyone. Take care.
Night, everyone. Thank you.
Night.